Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Before this meeting, we held an executive session where we discussed some personnel matters. We'll be starting our meeting out tonight with a presentation by the Nishamani Consortium watershed.
Good evening. My name's Karen Ogden. I'm the Watershed Specialist at the County Conservation District. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm here with Ken Jones. He's the president of the Nishamani Watershed Association. So Ken and I and another partner have been brainstorming this year to find a way to do business a little bit better so that we can make real improvements in the watershed. And we're here tonight to propose and to ask for your support, the board's support, for us to set up a steering committee and help find a way for the municipalities to work with the conservation community to make the real changes. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken here to go through a few slides and then I'll wrap up at the end.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to give a little bit of background about the watershed before Karen talks about our idea. And so I'm going to be stating a little bit of the blatant obvious, I think, for a lot of people here. But just to be sure we're all on the same page, we all have the same understanding, I'd like to just talk a little bit about the Nishamani watershed. So it's the largest watershed in Bucks County. It's roughly 236 square miles. And from Lansdale in the west to Plumsteadville in the east, those two branches of the Nishamani join together in Shellfund at Twinstreams Park. And then the main trunk of the Nishamani flows down to the Delaware. So we're part of the Delaware Basin. And the little Nishamani is also there and no less than three mill creeks also flow into the Nishamani watershed. And the Nishamani watershed touches 27 municipalities in Bucks County. So it's a large one. So I think we're all aware that humans have an effect on the environment. And we've had a pretty significant impact on the watershed over time. And so sort of what we do with the land affects ultimately the quality of the water in our watershed. So as we remove the canopy and we build homes and streets and roads and all of that, we basically end up pushing water more quickly into our streams. So we end up with sort of a volume problem, which also leads to a quality problem. So unfortunately, most of the Nishamani is, well, considered impaired by the P A D E P. So with that as background, that's the motivation for us talking to you here tonight. So if you look at our little slide here, you'll see that there are a number of green infrastructure approaches to dealing with some of the issues that we've seen here. And we, some of these are easy, some of these are more challenging, but there are solutions that can be applied. And at the Nishamani Watershed Association, which I represent here tonight, you know, our mantra, if you like, is "slow the flow." So what can we do to slow the flow of water into the watershed? So there's a set of practices that you can see here that we can apply. And as I said, there's a sort of a continuum of cost and complexity to making that happen. So I won't go through them in detail. I think you're probably aware of what most of those mean. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. So the good news is that there's kind of a community of volunteers out there who are interested in doing good work. And I'd like to make mention specifically of the Penn State Extension Master Watershed Stewart Program. Some of you are nodding and probably aware of that program. Maybe you know some folks who have participated in that. And so what you can see here is that we have done projects, we have done good work in the county, but it's been pretty ad hoc. It's really just been based on relationships. Who, you know, in the township that I live in, in New Britain Township, we've done a number of projects. And that's just a function of the fact that I live there and I have some relationships. So you can see here, we've done a lot of work throughout the county. And so what I'm going to do is hand it back to Karen to talk about our idea of how we can maybe be a little bit more strategic in our approach to the watershed.
So we see an opportunity and this, you know, these collaborations are going on in, you know, Bucks, Chester, Montgomery Counties between municipalities and watershed organizations. And as far as I can tell, we don't have a similar situation in Bucks County. So we kind of want this to be our first shot for a homegrown collaboration. How could this work for us? We're not, we can't take something that's going on in Montgomery County and drop it in Bucks County. So what we would like to do is to get stakeholders, we're starting with six municipalities on the main stem of the Nishamani, and we're asking for you to appoint one, maybe two people to a steering committee. And, you know, oh, great, another committee, but we have to get the minds around, to get the right people around the table to figure out first what your processes are as a municipality and where they intersect with the goals of the conservation community. The people who are out there who want to do the good work and you need to do the good work for compliance and for public interest and where do these things meet? And this is what we want, you know, these people around the table to figure out. This slide shows, you know, you've got your stakeholders and these common interests to all of us. If you've got parks and open space, you want it there for recreation. Well, you know, people like to recreate by watching birds or, you know, watching butterflies or being out there enjoying the natural environment. Meanwhile, we've got people who want to make those things happen on the ground. So how to get us to work together? So that's the point of this slide. We've got common stakeholders, common interests. We all kind of want the same outcomes. So what's the role, the vision statement? I don't need to read that to you. That's what we've come up with internally. That may change when we've got more voices around the table. But we're asking you first to let us, well, to appoint somebody who's your go-to person, who knows how you run your municipality, how decisions are made, how projects go from an idea to on the ground. I don't know who that is. You're going to know who that is. So we can interview them and get a feel for your process. And we're going to do this with all six municipalities. The next step, then, would be to get the people around the table with us having some background knowledge and start working out a framework. So specifically, a person to answer our questions, let us survey you, and then a person to participate in six steering committee meetings within one year. That's all we're asking for at this point, to see whether this has, can grow legs. Can this work? So that is what we're asking for your support. We're not asking for it tonight. We'd like you to consider it. We would love to hear an answer by April 15th so that we can keep moving with this initiative and start meeting hopefully as a group in May, June timeframe. If there are any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm personally very interested, especially when you talk about issues with the flow and volume. I live right by the Nishamani Creek and my son and I go hiking back there very often on a piece of county-owned property. Back there where there, in addition to the clear visual damage that's being done back there from runoff, which I've been interested in how we can address. There's also discussions with the county about not just that stretch, but all along the Nishamani, of building a bike trail, which I'm supportive of. But I also want to make sure we can use it as an opportunity to improve the stability of those riparian waterways and that kind of thing. So I think there's definitely a lot of interest from here and our environmental advisory committee has been very closely watching those kinds of things here in Doylestown.
Jen, you think you can get a consensus on the board right now whether we're going to support this project?
I think we need to vote on it next meeting, but if we can have a discussion about it, I suppose. I would be happy to.
I think, I'm speaking out of turn here, but I think this township will be supporting of this endeavor. And we already know who's going to handle it.
I agree. I agree with you, Barbara. I'd be interested in learning more about the naturalization of the basins. It's been a conversation. We've been going sort of circling around, so that would be great.
That's the idea, that there are resources that maybe we could bring through the N W A or through the Master Watershed Stewards to help you.
Exactly.
And when you're working with a collaboration, if it's not just Doylestown, but it's Doylestown and New Britain looking for that grant to naturalize not one basin, but six basins, then we're making real progress on a watershed scale.
We're very fortunate. We have a very strong E A C and a lot of interest in watershed. We even have some master watershed stewards that have, so I think you'll find a lot of support.
One additional question I have, you know, one of the things that I think is our biggest direct impact that Doylestown does is our compliance with the MS4 program. Working with other municipalities like that, is there a possibility, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but that we could work with other municipalities to shoulder some of those costs? It's also, it's obviously something we need to do, but it's also one of the biggest unfunded costs we have here in Doylestown.
This is, and that is a topic, that's something that has brought together collaboratives in our adjacent counties. You know, because they have, you know, their MS4 programs are more developed in places, but they have stormwater collaboratives that do just that, just MS4. So I personally see MS4 as the place where these goals intersect, you know, stormwater and habitat, conservation diversity. That's where it's happening. So yes, I do see a way for MS4 to be addressed. I'm not going to make promises and say we're going to get big money, but some other collaboratives have worked that into their framework, particularly for, you know, those measures one, two, and six. For public input, education, because, you know, when you've got your watershed organizations helping, you've got a broader reach. And then for the pollution control plans, or P R Ps, reduction plans, helping find good sites. That aren't going to break the bank, but you can still get your credit. There are just other ways to approach it with a bigger perspective.
Did you share who the six municipalities are that you're reaching out to?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Go for it. Okay. It's New Britain, Doylestown, Buckingham, Warrington, Middletown, and Ben Salem. So we're trying to get the whole stretch.
New Britain Borough or New Britain Township? Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like a great program.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
And in relation, we have a resolution that's being presented to the board for consideration. I'll quickly read it. It's a short one. It's a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Doylestown Township in support of participation in the Nishamani Consortium for Watershed Conservation in Bucks County. Whereas the Doylestown Township recognizes the importance of water resource conservation for the well-being of our community and the environment. And whereas the Nishamani Consortium is dedicated to becoming a respected and reliable advocate for water resource conservation in Bucks County. And whereas the Nishamani Consortium is committed to promoting ecologically functional watersheds that support biological diversity and human use. And whereas the Doylestown Township acknowledges the need for collaborative efforts in addressing water resource challenges, now therefore be it resolved that the Doylestown Township, I believe there needs to be, Doylestown Township expresses its support for participation in the Nishamani Consortium and commits to actively engage in deliberative and action-oriented measures to advance water resource conservation in collaboration with the consortium. Be it further resolved that the Doylestown Township Supervisors encourage residents, businesses, and stakeholders to join in the collective effort toward promoting sustainable water management practices and protecting our watersheds. And I believe we need to have a motion on this.
I'll make that motion to approve the resolution for the Board of Supervisors of Doylestown Township in support of participation in the Nishamani Consortium for Watershed Conservation in Bucks County.
I'll second.
Calling a question?
This is just the draft resolution to make it official for next meeting, right? Or?
I believe this is the draft resolution.
So we would vote on it for next meeting?
Correct. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. Public comments, agenda items?
Well, don't we have to finish approving the draft or, no, because, okay, even though we did the first second, we're just ignoring it.
No, no, no. We'll, we'll. Public comment on agenda items? None. Announcements, the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, at 7:00 P. M. Keep up to date with township news events by signing up for our e-news at DoylestownPA.org. E-news is sent out every Friday at 4:00 P. M. There's a lot of wonderful information in those newsletters. Minutes approval. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Move for their approval.
Do you have a second?
I have one potential edit I'm not certain about, but on page four, it was with regards to the land development agreement at the very bottom for 1796. It mentioned, what was the exact wording? The board has been working with Attorney Jeff Garden resolving the litigation. We'll be reviewing the. You know what? Never mind. I misread that, so we're good.
Okay.
I thought it said we were still working with Mr. Garden, so that was a misread on my part.
Okay. Calling a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's 5-0. All right. Next on the agenda, volunteer resignation. We received a letter from Mr. Stone for his resignation from D T M A. Would anybody like to speak on that?
Move for the acceptance of his resignation. With regrets, he's moving to Warminster.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The TASSA award, do you want to speak on this?
Certainly. Just wanted to let the board know that the D V R P C 2023 Transportation Alternative Set-Aide Program, which they refer to as TASSA, the township received a $1.5 million grant for the southeastern road township to Borough Connector. It will kind of go from where the trail at Steeplechase and the new Wawa is all the way down and tie in with the trail at Tabor. So we received that. They're going to, we haven't, we still have to get paperwork and everything like that, but they did send us the letter of award.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is there, with this, is there, we pay for the engineering costs with this grant?
Yes, it's 100% construction, but the township would be responsible for the engineering costs on it.
Engineering costs, okay. We don't know what those will be or have an estimate. Is that correct?
At this point, it'll be a percentage. Most likely, we'll get details as we get into the project and everything as to what that will be. You'll have contracts and everything to review at that time as we move it forward.
All right. Yes, I'm calling the question on whether we are accepting the award. Do we, do we need to vote on this?
At this time, I don't think you have to vote on anything. This is just information that, correspondence, that we received it. And like I said, they're going to be getting in touch with us. We'll have, you know, agreements to authorize and everything like that. But they haven't reached out since they sent the letter.
And just a big picture thing for folks who may not be familiar with our bike trails. We're currently constructing a path from out back of Central Park along New Britain Road, where they're currently doing construction on the new roundabouts, which will also have bike paths, which will also go up to this, where we just got this award grant. So we're kind of connecting that whole stretch up into Doylestown there. The other Doylestown.
And it's wonderful to receive $1.5 million in a grant. So thank you. Thank you for your efforts in putting that together.
All right. So report solicitor?
Nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing for this evening.
Chief?
Yes, included and approved in the 2024 budget was a line item to change our records management system, the format of our records management system from an in-house server-based system to a cloud-based system. In order to do that, in order to follow through with that, we need a contract signed with our C O D I vendor. The copy of the contract was forwarded to the solicitor's office. And it was my understanding that was, the contract was reviewed and approved by the solicitor's office. What we're looking for tonight is the board's approval to either have the township manager or myself sign the contract locking us into a period of time for the next couple of years. If there's any questions regarding the contract or what's actually in there, Lieutenant's here to answer any specific questions regarding that. But we're just looking at this time for approval of the board to sign the contract.
I move for the approval of either the township manager or the chief to be able to execute the documents necessary to extend this contract or whatever it's called.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have nothing else.
Thank you. Director of Operations?
Okay, a couple of items. First is our MS4 stream bank stabilization project. So this project, speaking about stream banks, is right behind our facility here, behind our public works buildings. It actually starts in Central Park behind Kids Castle, runs about 2,500 feet down and through to Turk Road. And as part of our permit, our current permit, which expires in 2020, actually at the end of this year, I think, is when it expires, we had identified a number of projects and this stream bank project being one of them. So basically, what we've done is we engaged Gilmore Associates to do the design and permitting. That was done, it was publicly bid on Penn Bid. We opened the bids earlier this month. And basically, I'm asking the board to basically award the project for the stream bank stabilization project to, I want to get this right, Stonewood Land Shaping Incorporated, not landscaping, Land Shaping Incorporated, for the amount of $743,100. That includes the base bids plus alternates one, two, and three.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. I just want to say that the budgeted amount for this line item was significantly higher. And through the work of our department and Gilmore, we've managed to save a significant amount of money on this. And I'm very happy about that. Okay, we have a first, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is Central Park, New Britain Road parking lot improvement. We identified this as a project when we were doing the 2024 budget. What we, right now currently, because we're under construction for the Community Recreation Center, we are underparked, we're significantly underparked in the, in Central Park itself throughout. And we see that on busy days with people going to Kids Castle and activities, programs that are scheduled in the field and such throughout the year. So what we did is we identified this project where we would expand the parking lot up off New Britain Road, almost doubling its size. So we created a capital project. For this year, we had, in the capital expenditure form, we earmarked $35,000 for engineering. And we have over $400,000 for construction next year, for paving. We are looking to try to save some money and do this work in-house this year to actually create this lot as we go through our programs and concerts this summer. So there'll be some public works involvement. But right now, we've asked Panoni, we basically have to engineer and permit this work. So Panoni prepared a scope of work. And I'm asking the board to approve their scope of work for, and I'm generous for, design development, site plan improvement, stormwater management, and permitting totaling $28,700.
So moved.
I do have a question relating to the lighting plan part of it.
Can we get a second first? Do we have a second? And then we can have a conversation.
Do you need a cast?
Yeah, you have, you have conversation after the second.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, Jen?
Sure. For the lighting plans, at this stage, Dave, are we looking at like actual full scope lighting for that area?
Well, we've, so what we want to light the parking lot, because what occurs is as we get concerts into the end of the year, we have, it's dark up there, we have people walking up into those areas. So obviously, we invite them to the park for a concert or they come and we make it secure. So we're looking to do some type of, yeah, blanket wide lighting throughout the parking lot. Now, will it be lit 24/7? Probably not. It looks like it will be a, you know, as needed basis as we get into the concert season. We're looking at many installations, some of them might be solar standalone installations. So that will go through the design process. I know Mr. Balsares here with the E A C, Chair of the E A C, we've talked to the E A C about.
That's exactly why I'm bringing this up.
In Central Park, exactly, yes. So we'll, we will work with our committees to make sure we're, you know, we're hearing them and we're implementing good practices.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure it was on the radar. I attended the E A C this past week and we talked about motion sensitive lights, but I don't know if that necessarily the best fit for this, if we're only going to turn it on for the concert series, but both solutions to, you know, only use the lights when we need them.
Kathy? Can you go to the mic?
Kathy Brown, Sunset View, Doylestown. In doing the improvements for the New Britain Road parking lot, is there a way to add to that a connection between the existing parking lot and the 202 trail to the Central Park bike path? And if you don't understand what I'm talking about, if you pull in right underneath the bypass bridge, there is no way to get to the township park path without tromping through the snow right now. And I have to say that the road department did a fabulous job clearing everything. But what happens is it piles everything up and it's very difficult to walk from one to the other. And if we're going to be paving in that area, could we add that little bit of space to connect the two? I mean, I just thought this is an opportune time to bring that up. So that's it.
Thank you.
That was our plan. That was our discussion and our plan to have a loop that connected that around to do that. I'll mention it, but yes, that is part of the plan. Yep, absolutely.
Wonderful. Is there any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. Calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0.
Okay, the next item is the Community Recreation Center Skeptin Construction Change Order Number One. Skeptin is one of the four prime contractors. They are the general contractor for the project. Change order number one for Skeptin was for additional, what they call, coverboard on the flat roof installation. As outlined in their change order, this will protect the underlying hard insulation. They're recommending this install. It was not part of the bid developed by the architect. This change order is for $4,115.34. I'm asking for the board's approval of change order number one for Skeptin Construction.
So moved. Second.
Can I just ask a question? I don't, I obviously want to do the right thing for the building. My question is, if our architect saw this and they approved it and now they're coming back and saying we need this, why do we have to eat the $4,000? Why aren't they paying, covering it? Just, I'm just, it's more procedural. It's not so much, right? If they approved, if they, they went through and presented us, none of us are project designers or construction people. I'm just curious, I mean, it's not the money, it's more the process. They are the ones who recommended, and now it's coming back. Someone else is saying, hey, you need this in order, for insurance purposes, et cetera.
I can't speak for the architect as to why they missed it. I don't know. That happens. There's obviously many reasons for change orders. And whether they're additions or deletions, it just happened that the contractor and their, their actually roofer who's, knowing that this is a flat roof where all the A C units are going to be located, people are going to be walking up there, if this was a roof that they weren't walking on and really have heavy foot traffic, it probably wouldn't have been done, but because of the rooftop units, the contractor and their vendor are recommending it, and it's also part of the warranty.
No, like I said, I want to do the right thing by it. I don't think there was any ill. Want to do the right thing by it, I don't think there was any ill intent, I just don't want to pay any, anything extra, that's all. So I'm going to ask, it's more the process that I'm really asking. Okay.
And unfortunately, and, you know, the engineers, the architects don't catch everything, unfortunately, so.
I'm just going to be that one who asks, that's all.
I understand.
And that's part of the contingency that we have in our budget, we know that there's going to be things that maybe the, the people who we contract with might have, be specialized in, say, the roofers with the roofing, that, that may, they might come up with some fabulous ideas that, or, or, or catch something that might be important. They might find a, a process that would save us money, and there would be a change order going the opposite direction, so I'm hoping we'll have a good amount of those too.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so I have a, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh.
Okay, my next item is also the Community Recreation Center Access Control and Security Camera Proposal. When we designed and developed, did design development for this building, we, we basically contracted with Access Control, Access Security Corporation, they're a company that's on Co-Stars, and we had them install the Access Control and Security Camera System here. We intend to expand that system to include the building and around the surrounding area of the building, so we've obtained a proposal from Access Security Corporation for the camera system and access control totaling $212,655.
Can I ask one question? Sorry. Will these cameras also be on the courts, Steve?
Yes, there will be cameras on the courts as well.
Great, thank you. Just making sure I sell that.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Community Recreation Center Builders Risk Insurance Policy. When we did this building, we obtained a builder's risk policy, we're doing the same thing for the Community Recreation Center, we reached out to our insurance carrier, obtained quotes. The quote is from Selective for $11,105 for a builder's risk policy for the term, basically, March of 24 to March of 2025.
I move for the award of $11,105 to Selective for the builder's risk policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh.
Okay, and last item I have is the change order policy. I'll go back to when we did this building again, because of the building committee and to keep things on schedule, we had developed a, a change order policy with the chair and involved the chair and vice chair of the committee, as well as members of the building committee. We tweaked this a little bit, because while we have a building committee, it's not as, as active as it was in this building, because so many decisions had to be made, so I drafted up the policy, it was in your packet. This will keep us on track if we have change orders that fall outside our regular schedule of the board supervisors, the, what I've identified as the chair and vice chair of the board supervisors have the right to table or wait to go to a board meeting for discussion on any change order. They also have the right, based on dollar amounts, 10,000 being the one trigger, and then anything above 10,000, there's basically committee, the building committee and the two board representatives to approve and review those change orders. All change orders, after they're approved, will be reported to the board supervisors in the monthly report packet regarding the project, which I've already provided earlier today, and will be included monthly packet, in the packet.
I only have one question, sorry. And I appreciate, I did speak to our chair about this, because I had some questions, and she clarified them for me. Is there, should there, or could there be a stopgap of like, I appreciate you, we want to keep things moving, but it's, you know, the 10,000 under, 10,000 over, but if it's more than a certain percentage or a certain dollar amount that the entire board would find out sooner than, if it happens the day after a meeting, for instance, and now there's, you know, four change orders, is there, or should there be a stopgap if it's more than a certain number, that the entire board would have to vote on it? Am I, am I being clear? I, I don't know, just, I'm just asking that question before we agree to it. I'm just, sports more process and safeguards.
So I, I think it's an interesting question. As far as my decision when it comes to this, if it's something that I believe needs to be brought to the full board, it can be whole, it can be held till the next meeting. It's, it's really just for emergency purposes that we would do it, and we'd ratify it at the next board meeting. I mean, one of the, one of the things that you could do is to vote to change this, where it's no longer, you know, if you feel like I'm making the wrong decisions.
Right, I mean, I didn't know, I'm just asking, looking at you and the solicitor, if there's any recommendation to it. I'm, I'm fine with it, I just was thinking more about if, you know, all of a sudden you were getting hit with all of these, that the whole board would be responsible fiscally rather than it just falling on you or the vice chair, that's, that's the only reason I'm asking.
There, there's real tone and energy to construction, and once you got something going on the, when you got boots on the ground and something comes up, if you can resolve it then and there with, with a policy like that, you can, then it moves along. If you have to wait for a committee, or the next board meeting or something, you're stopping construction, it's going to cost you a lot more, because everybody's on a timeline. You, if you have to stop the construction because the, the sewer pipe wasn't installed properly, or there's no allocation for, then, you know, the plumbing gets hung up, and the, you know, the, the guys who are removing the dirt get hung up, I mean, this, it's just, it's a well-oiled machine, and there are little things that come up under $10,000, which can be resolved then and there on the spot. Anything over, then you, they pull, you know, the big, the big girls in to, to make, to make the decision.
I'm not looking to slow the cadence of the project.
That's why the policy, that's why the policy exists. About, I was just trying to see if there was a guardrail we needed to create, that's why I was asking, that's all.
I move for the approval of the Doylestown Township Community Recreation Center Change Order Approval Policy.
Do I have a second?
I second.
One question, Dave, how, for this building, how often, do you recall how often that was used?
It was used a lot of times, we had, we had a lot of little things that always, that occurred, and we did, and it, this is, it worked out well, and it was, really came from Mr. Snyder, who was, you know, former member of the board and, and chaired the building committee, so yeah, we did, and there were a significant amount, but it worked well, and then we informed the board, and we had a tracker, and we should, every, every month the board received the updates on the changes, and the change in the, in the scope and schedule, whatever it was.
And I assume we'll also be receiving those updates?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So five oh. Okay, Township Manager.
I have nothing at this time.
All right, Supervisors. Nancy, do you want to start?
Sure, just want to thank our EAC, I met with them, their energy always amazes me, thank you to our chair for taking the time to educate me on where they're moving for this year, and I wish you all the best with that. Also want to thank our other guy out in the field, Mr. Denton, for all of your hard this week, hard work this week.
That's it. Judy?
Sure, it's been busy with the various committees, and again, always thank you to all the volunteers who help us out at Doylestown Township, your work and knowledge is invaluable. This morning, we had the Bike and Hike Meeting, and this shady retreat road, Safe to School Walk is getting underway now, so that's exciting, especially, it will safeguard as it progresses, it will safeguard the shoulder, people walking across the shoulder on Limekill Pike, close to the hospital light at Limekill and the, and Doylestown Hospital, so people will eventually be protected from people, from cars coming onto the shoulder, so that's a great project, and I know Bike and Hike has a lot more tremendous, tremendous projects also coming down the pipe. Also, was happy to help out with Capitol Campaign, I'm sure Barb's going to talk a little bit more about that, but it's wonderful to see all the donations coming in for the improved community center. EAC, Dan's been helping out with that, so I'll let him talk a little bit about that. Public Water and Sewer was attending that meeting, and the committee is fully recommending the 537 Plan to be put in place in the updates, so they, it has their full support. And lastly, I did get to attend the LTAC, that's the Local Traffic Advisory Committee, with Dave Tomko, who's also on that committee, he's the chair, and we're still talking about calming on Turk Road with residents, because the road is divided between Doylestown Township and Warrington Township, the residents are also going to Warrington Township for some satisfaction, so that together we can come up with a joint solution to those residents, and to hopefully slow the traffic on that road. And then just to say thank you to the various police departments, Warrington Township, the Doylestown Fire Company Number One, Shaw, Font, Horsham, and Warminster Fire Companies for going out and attending the fire that just happened this past Sunday on West, Westway Lane. It was a fairly large fire, if anybody's seen the pictures of it, so thanks to those volunteers for their efforts in, in putting out that fire. That's it.
Barbara?
I didn't report last month, so unfortunately, I have quite a few things. Park and Rec, we're not doing our golf outing at Doylestown Country Club, you, my friends at Lenape Valley Foundation are probably wondering why, they became cost prohibitive, and frankly, they don't give us as much money as we, as much for our money. So we're going to Commonwealth and the Commonwealth, and Commonwealth Golf Course, the golf outing will be on October 7th this year. We're looking for sponsors, and that's kind of our co-job with the, the Capitol Campaign Committee. I see a couple sponsors out there now, so thank you in advance of your sponsorship, and we need, we need the money, because it's a lot more expensive at Commonwealth, so. The other thing is that Kathy Brown, whom you've heard from, is going to be working on a virtual golf outing, and starting like January 2025, in the new place in the center of town, where you go and you hit balls and, you know, yeah, and you, you can actually golf, a bunch of different golf courses, and, and have a foursome, and have beer, and it's, it's going to be a fun time. And you can always have kids too, but not with the beer. So that's happening around January 2025. The other board I lay as on is Telecommunications Advisory Board, and they are like so busy. They're doing promotions for the DART, for the Dog Park, for the Community Rec, Community Rec Center, for the Environmental Advisory Council, they're doing for the Summer Concert Series, and they're going to promo the golf outing and National Night Out. And what I mean by that, they're, they're creating videos for all these events and putting them out there on all their social platforms and DTV and on, and they're actually producing these things, and they like do storyboards and things, I don't know, it's amazing what they can do, you know, and it's very impressive, so that's those guys, they're amazing. And then the Veterans Advisory Committee, they're looking to do something in the new, in the new, amongst the new park improvements for the vets, for their, for the veterans associations, so they're working on project, it's kind of a secret, but they're working on something for the new, the new park improvement project. And the Capitol Campaign Committee, we're, we have a $3 million goal, we're at 2.2, so we're still looking for, you know, people who want to put their names to various places in our, in our, in our building and sports courts, and I'm happy to, to announce that the Thompson family has, will put their name to our patio and playroom for, with a contribution of $150,000, and we're very grateful to the Thompson family, also known as the Thompson Organization, who have been longtime sponsors to our performing, performing arts series every year for many, many years. So I, I think that's pretty much it, we're going to be participating with the PRB, Park and Rec Board, for any and all opportunities to raise money for the Community Recreation Center and Park Improvement, so stand by, and we're on our way. So anybody who wants to have their name on a building, or a piece of, piece of, you know, sports, sports sign or anything like that, see me, that's all I got.
Wonderful, wow, that's a lot. All right, Dan?
Shorter report from me. I kind of already talked a bit about EAC-related things this evening, we spoke about ways that we can adapt the upcoming Central Park plans to better suit our environmental policies and goals going forward. Filled in for Judy on that one this week, and planning I would talk about, but a lot of the people involved in that are here tonight that we'll talk about later this evening, so I don't have a whole lot to add at the moment.
Thank you. I would first like to acknowledge that it is Black History Month, we have a lot of interesting and important members of our community, former members of our community, that should be acknowledged for their contributions. Leila Lane was an educator and a social activist that ran a forum for inner-city youth during the Great Depression in New Britain, so our neighboring municipality. She's also pivotal in convincing President Truman to de-segregate the military. Benjamin Jones, some of you have heard about him in the past, I've mentioned his name before, also known as Big Ben, who was an enslaved person that ran, that, that was able to escape, was brought back, and came and was able to be free in this area, and lived the rest of his life in what we know as the Alm's House right now, it was the Alm's House then as well. In our township, there is an independent film called The North Star, that is about Mr. Jones, and it is starring Jeremiah Trotter, so if anybody's interested in that, that's a good reference for, for this month. There's also Jean Tumer, who is an American poet and novelist associated with the Harlem Renaissance, his most influential novel, or most known novel was called Keen. You can find a lot of this information at the African-American Museum of Bucks County that is being built at this point, and also the Doylestown Historical Society has a lot of wonderful information about our former and current black residents that have made their mark in our, in our, in our area. I'd also like to acknowledge that it is Chinese New Year, it is the Year of the Wood Dragon, and Happy New Year to those who celebrate. Yes, there was a devastating house fire that Supervisor Dixon had mentioned, I would also like to thank all the fire companies that came out to help, and our own fire marshal, this fire took five hours to put out, it was a significant and devastating event.
And there was a loss of life.
There was a loss of life, yes.
Keep good thoughts for the family.
Sergeant Whiteside, I'd like to congratulate her as well for graduating the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command, that was a wonderful accomplishment, like to make sure I publicly recognize that, and of course, thanks to the road crew for all their work during the winter weather. I also wanted to let people know that Doylestown Township has a No Solicitation Request Form, so if you want to keep solicitor, solicitations from your house, you know, it would be business types of solicitation, you can go on our webpage, on the Police Crime Watch page, in the forms, and fill that out, it's good for a full year, it's good for the calendar year, I should say, so you have to re-up it every January to get the full year's worth, but you can go on there and sign up now, I found it very helpful. I participated in a meeting that was hosted by Senator Santisaro, as well as several other people from the township, related to what is called Blue Zones. These are areas in the world that there is significant longevity and health with our residents, this is exercise, food, community, and they're studying how they can bring that to our, our region. And I also attended an NAACP Policing Study Discussion, where we discussed the results of one of their, the Bucks County NAACP's study of the departments in the county, and that's it. All right, so where are we? Now we're moving on to unfinished business. There's a resolution to sunset our Dog Park Committee, our Dog Park Committee has been, has been very important in keeping our Dog Park running, in establishing it, and growing it, but they have done wonderful work, and it's time to move forward with that. We're looking to roll that committee into more of a subcommittee in our Park and, our Parks Committee, so I would like to see if anybody would like to make a motion.
Move for the Resolution 2569, sunsetting the Dog Park Committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
Advisory Board. The Advisory Board, my, thank you for correcting me, Kathy Brown.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next on our agenda is our 537 Plan Update, I believe Steve Hartman's here from Carroll Engineering, and I don't know, Joe, do you want to, you're just here, okay.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me, Steve Hartman, Carroll Engineering. So I was here in September 2023 to go over the, the highlights of the plan, which is, I don't know if I should be controlling this. There we go. Basically, this is the general outline of the 537 Plan, it's a, it's a roadmap for sewer-ing any existing areas- It's a roadmap for sewer-ing any existing areas of the township and not too much to hit there. I really just wanted to go over what changed since September. Basically, the, we put the public notice out and we did receive comments. I'm sorry, I'm skipping around here, that's number three there. All written public comments have been inserted into the Appendix E of the 537 Update. An additional document summarizing the comments with responses has been included and it's also been shared with the public at a November 23 meeting as well as posted on the township website. Going back to number one there, the project cost estimates were updated to remove the grinder pumps from the public portion. Essentially, that dropped each cost estimate per property by, by about $5,000. The public, I'm sorry, the Bucks County Health Department, the Bucks County Planning Commission and the Township Plan Commission reviews have come in and they've been inserted into the update. Appendix I was at it, which contains a letter from the township that they sent out to all affected residents in the Chestnut Valley, Pine Valley, Shady Grove and Buttonwood Lane areas. That was back in December 29, 2023. And last is the Ashbridge at Furlong Development Project just received its approval from DEP. So the only thing I wanted to mention there is that affects this 537 Plan. This next slide here, I don't know if you can see it too easily there, but there's a purple outline area. This corridor is essentially going to be allowed to connect to a pipeline that the developer would install as part of their project. And so anything inside that purple dashed area there could connect at their leisure to a public sewer. So we did work that into this plan update. This is just a cost comparison of the four projects that are in the five-year planning of the 537 Plan, the 611 corridor area, the Pine Valley Road area, Chestnut Valley and the Shammany Del Haven. And you can see off to the right there, the shaded area was the former cost per EDU, cost per house, basically. Whereas the one right to the left is the $5,000 lower cost on average. And basically, the next steps, if the Township Board decides to put this resolution forward, we can submit the 537 to DEP. They usually take about three months, four months to review. They usually would have some comments that we'd have to answer and go back and forth. And then they would approve the 537 update. And that's the, unless there's any questions, that's the end of my presentation.
Not me. I don't have any questions. All right. Are there any public comment on this? Any questions from the audience? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like we have a, a resolution. Resolution 2568 authorizing the 537 Plan to proceed with design and construction of the public sewers in the five-year project areas and take the initial steps of planning to provide public sewers for the area designated as area, a drainage area.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ding.
Madam Chairman, I have a question probably for the Solicitor in terms of do we need to do anything else besides the resolution to officially submit this to DEP outside of, you know, getting it to them? Or does the resolution, is that satisfactory?
I believe that the resolution is satisfactory. I also believe by adopting this resolution, you are inherently, implicitly I should say, directing staff and consultants to take the necessary steps to make sure it gets to DEP.
Okay. Thank you.
New business, Boards and Commissions appointments. We have had discussions and interviews and looked over the, the qualifications of several individuals and I guess we have them in front of us for the Finance Committee. It looks like I'm looking for a, a vote on whether Michael Avicii and Christina Maida would be joining our Finance Committee.
I move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The Environmental Advisory Council, we have Marcello Aggiano.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And for the DTMA, Mr. McOates.
I move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is to finish the term of Rod Stone, who has left the DTMA. The next order of business is to exonerate the tax collector. Every year, the tax collector, for whatever taxes that they haven't yet collected, they will, there's a motion, a vote to exonerate the tax collector. So all those uncollected taxes will go to the county for, for collection. This is something that's done every year. Have a motion?
Second.
Oh, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Barbara, your second.
Sorry, third.
Your third?
I thought you said motion.
Okay.
Apologies.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Wonderful. So the Pension Investment Advisory Appointment. We had a pension advisor a couple of years ago. We went through the RFP process with Vanguard and chose Vanguard to be our pension advisor. Unfortunately, because of a change in their business model, they are no longer servicing municipal pensions. So we decided to go through the whole process again. We interviewed several, we put out RFPs. The Pension Advisory Council and staff worked very hard at determining which were the best candidates, interviewed several candidates and came to the conclusion by unanimous consensus that, that we should be appointing Gerard, who was actually one of our runners-up last time. So.
I move that we follow the advice of the Pension Advisor Committee and all those who interviewed Gerard, that we accept Gerard as our.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Our guy.
Gerard.
Aye.
Thank you.
Land development, we're looking at Doylestown Veterinary Hospital and Holiday House Land Development.
Kristen Holmes here with Holmes Cunningham Engineering, the civil engineer on behalf of the project. I believe you may be familiar with this project. We've been before the Board for Sketch Plan Review as well as zoning hearing application and now here tonight for land development. In summary, this is an expansion with some additions to the existing operations of the Holiday House and Doylestown Veterinary Hospital on the existing campus along Shady Retreat Road. We have submitted land development plans. Overall, we've received consultant reviews and I would say in brief summary, everything within those reviews is a will comply. We are requesting three waivers as part of this application as well, but certainly if there's any questions as it relates to the application, I'm happy to answer.
Does anybody have questions?
Just, Mr. Solicitor, have you reviewed this and do you have any questions or suggestions with the waiver request?
We have reviewed it. We have provided a conditioned approval letter and we have no further comment.
That's all, thank you.
And we did receive that Colby Grimm from Grimm Bean and Thatcher. We did receive that condition letter and we agree with everything. There was one minor mistake that I did send over, but I think that was taken care of.
Thank you. Thanks for buttoning that up. I move for the approval of the Veterinary Hospital Holiday House Land Development Plan Approval.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
And I believe the planning module is also on that as well. I don't know if I should say also that.
Yes. I move for the approval of the planning module as well.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next, we have Doylestown Hospital Crisis Center Land Development Plan.
Jen, thank you. Board members, good evening. Kelly McGowan here. Very pleased to be introducing you to Bright Path Center. Bright Path Center is lighting the way for behavioral healthcare and substance use recovery in Bucks County. I am here with representatives of the Lenape Valley Foundation, including some of my fellow Board members, representatives of the County of Bucks who are undertaking this project. You have seen the project, I believe we were here one time previously. We are requesting a preliminary final land development approval this evening in order to move forward with our site plan. This plan that I am about to show you has been reviewed by your staff and your professionals. We did go through full reviews. We also went to the Planning Commission in January and received a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission for both the approvals and only three waivers, three minor waivers are required from subdivision ordinance. We had a follow-up meeting with your staff to button up a few of the issues, primarily discussions relating to landscaping and the bike and hike path. It's always like, right? Yeah, what we're used to talking about. But we feel really good about where the project is right now. We had a site visit with your Planner's Office to do some, some tree work last week. You can see and I did want to bring to your attention just some of the things we've been working on since we were before the Board last. You heard me mention the bike and hike trail. So one of the, the key components from a land development perspective of this plan is the relocation of that bike and hike trail in the location of the Shady Retreat Road Lime Kiln Pike intersection. We are pulling that off that intersection. The other thing that you see on this plan is that we are providing a grass separation now along Hospital Road. And that's gonna pull that bike path off the road, provide that separation in both the area of, of this building, which is close to the intersection, but then also pulling that up Hospital Drive. So with those two modifications, I think, as I said before, we're in a good spot. I have Jerry Gorski here with Gorski Engineering, who is doing both the building design and the project management in the event that you have any questions with respect to the building, but we are still working through those processes as well.
So I really, I mean, I use that trail quite a bit and I'm really pleased to hear that there'll be a grass separating the road from the bike path because that's always been kind of too close for comfort a lot of times when you're walking on that. So that'll go all the way to the creek, is that correct?
So yeah, it'll come down to just about where you make that, the corner at that bridge. Correct. And yeah, as you know, we've struggled over the years with that separation, with how to get that, you know, the traffic separated from the pedestrians and the bikes. So we are still working with Chris, we're still working on figuring out what that center island's gonna look like. I know the Planning Commission had some ideas. We bounced some ideas around staff, whether that's vegetation or, you know, some other type of, of barrier that's not going to pose a risk either to the vehicles or to the pedestrians.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion. Mr. Solicitor, any issues outstanding and need to know about? Sounds like everything's okay?
Everything is okay. Again, we have drafted an approval letter. We've reviewed it, everything seems fine.
Okay. I move for the approval of the Doylestown, excuse me, wrong, wrong. Doylestown Hospital, Bucks County Crisis Center Land Development Approval. That's my motion.
Do I, do I second that?
Yeah, if you want to second it, then we can continue.
And then you can talk.
So I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
What I would like to know is the amount of traffic that's going to be coming to that, to that intersection. It is a really busy, people use that path all the time. It's one of the largest bike hike populous, popular routes, I'd say, in Doylestown Township. So I thought I read about 50, 60 cars, 64 cars additionally a day. I'm not sure how that would impact pedestrian walking. Is it gonna be a big hindrance or maybe the chief can shed some light on that too?
So I'll answer your question, then I'll defer to the chief. Couple of things, first of which is, yes, that's the approximate number between 50, 60. It's based upon a medical office building, which is, you know, what this building is classified as. We're proposing 81 parking spaces in addition to a connection to the existing Lenape Valley Foundation parking lot, to handle that that way. It did not come up with any issues with respect to additional traffic volume. There's going to be some duplicate traffic that you see now. Some of these services are already being offered on the hospital campus and at the existing Lenape Valley Foundation building. So we did not determine that it was going to exacerbate traffic to that extent as to require any additional improvements.
Okay. Is there any like, I'm just envisioning all the CB West kids that come and use that as a cut-through, right? And so is there like, when you have that grass area, just concerned the visibility?
Sure. Well, there's a couple of things. The first of which is signage.
Right.
So you're going to see, if I can go back to my plan here, there's a single driveway to direct traffic into one single location. And again, there's also that connection between the existing parking lot and the new center. So if you do, in a rare instance, pull in and, and circle the building or can't find a place to park, that type of thing, there is that shared parking ability. So that will, will help to keep, you know, more, more of the trips off of the road. Is there a cut-through on, you know, say we all do it?
Yeah, we're all guilty, yeah.
Yeah, sure. That is, it is a low-volume road, generally low traffic speeds. So we think everything that we're doing here is, is an improvement to the existing condition and isn't, isn't gonna worsen an existing condition.
Okay. Is there, I don't think there is, but is there any outdoor space for, I know it's a short, supposed to be short-term, but is there any outdoor space? And I'm just thinking about the school that, the Doylestown, the Doyle Elementary being as close as it is.
So there is. So you can see, if you look at the interior of these parking areas, that green space, that is all green open space. The, any formal programming for that space hasn't been determined yet, but to the extent there is, you know, garden areas, benches, you know, areas to have space on-site outside, that's certainly in process.
And will emergency vehicles be needed to go into that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's also a concern with people walking on that pathway with emergency vehicles potentially coming too quickly into that parking lot?
So one of the, I think one of the benefits to this location is it's on the hospital campus. So it's not the introduction of emergency vehicles that aren't already on, you know, servicing such as ambulances, servicing the hospital. You'll see, when you pull in, it has been, I'll say sized to four emergency vehicles. There's a Sally Port located, what I'm gonna call to the left of the building, and that is a safe access for either police vehicles or ambulances to pull in when patients are arriving, those patients are arriving to the center.
When patients are released on their, they, is, what's the, and maybe the chief knows, I'm just curious, what is the process for that? Do you have the pass there and how that works? Is this, is this supposed to be a, a mental health crisis, short-term, up to 10 days approximately?
It is an outpatient facility and, and I'm gonna defer to the chief. Chief and I talked today.
Yeah.
Just today.
That's just my curiosity with the passage. Judy keeps talking about how that works.
No, it's, it's a good question and it's the right question. I just provided to Chief Logan a collaboration agreement that we are looking to, with the help of the District Attorney's Office, implement for law enforcement, for Lenape Valley Foundation in order to provide, you know, those answers, which is how the intake process works, how the outtake process works. And coordinate with, you know, again, the law enforcement, because it's not just Doylestown Township, in the surrounding areas to, you know, implement a, what I'm calling like a standard operating procedure for those procedures.
Right, I'm just thinking because of the bike paths, because of the school, because...
Because of everything.
Of everything.
It's my, it's my understanding that, that when, when an individual who sought treatment is being either discharged or that the...
is being either discharged or that the facility is going to do everything in their power to arrange transportation back to their hometown. It's, I don't believe anybody wants to see the individuals being, seek the treatment, however long it may be, and being put out of the door to find their own way.
Exactly.
I don't believe that that's, and that was part of my discussions with the Lenape Valley months ago. And they've, they're reassuring me that that is still their plan, to make sure that everyone has safe transportation home. So hopefully, hopefully can follow through with that, and, you know, that will be, remain to be seen.
So will we get something in writing eventually, or how does that work? I'm just curious.
That is, again, that's outside the scope of my ability to require it. I think it's a good faith thing that they have encouraged that they're going to try and do, and I believe that they're going to follow through with that. I don't believe that, I'm not an expert, but I believe that they would do a disservice to the treatment they're trying to do if they gave somebody service for 10 days and it said, there's the door. I don't believe that that's, that would work.
Well, I don't think it's them, I think it's your patient made.
Well, again, we can't control the patient. If they can only give so much, and once, you know, obviously, that's something that the law enforcement, that we're going to have to deal with if a patient refuses to take the transportation, that patient's going to be exiting. Hopefully, that we can control it and maintain it and service it. If we can't service it, then there's, you know, we're going to have to find ways to do it.
Okay. I'd like to speak to my motion. Jen and I participated in a roundtable discussion about, I don't know, a year ago. And, you know, Diane Rosati was there, the members of Bucks County Government, other politicians and so on, Lenape Valley Foundation. I am so pleased and so proud that this facility is going to be in Doylestown Township. It's the first time this, they're marrying drug and alcohol misuse treatment with mental health treatment in one place. Long time coming, it makes so much sense, but Lenape Valley Foundation is doing it. And they're to be congratulated and thanked. And I'm, again, I'm happy to make the motion, there's a second. And I think, Jen, you would also speak to, it was a wonderful experience, hearing about it and now seeing it happening, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Indeed.
It is, it is a wonderful opportunity for the community to have a place where people can go to get quality treatment. And currently, you see a lot of people that are going through crisis that ended, end up going to the emergency room, which is not necessarily the right place for these types of things. So I'm, I'm very excited about having this facility in the township.
You know, the other thing I want to say, you know, all of our police officers in Bucks County now, you know, didn't always be that way, have had crisis intervention training. That's the Lenape Valley Foundation. So from the get-go, our first responders, our police officers, have been trained and always will be trained in how to respond to crisis. So again, thank you for that.
I'm excited for the project, too. I just want to make sure our pedestrians are safe.
Understood.
Right. Just one question. Where is it pooling from that'll be coming to the center? I 100% agree with supervisor lines, it's certainly needed. How, from what area is it pooling?
From Bucks County.
It's all of Bucks County, upper Bucks, lower Bucks?
Yeah, yes, I think.
All of Bucks County.
It is all.
All, okay, all, I just want.
Sure.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And it looks like you also have a planning module.
I'm moved.
Do you have a second?
I'm for the approval of planning module, sorry.
Thank you. And Judy, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Oh, Kelly, do you, which one is this? Oh, this is the 1796 Southeaston Road extension. Do you want to make a comment?
Yes, please. We have requested an extension of the time period for the land development plan at 1796 Eastern Road. We will be appearing before the Township's Planning Commission at the next meeting next week in order to get the Planning Commission's comments prior to resubmitting the plan, which we anticipate doing fairly quickly after that meeting, and then coming before the Board of Supervisors after reviews, hopefully sometime in April or May. So the extension is granted through the end of May.
All right, do we need to do anything with this extension? All right, so we need a motion?
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, board members.
Bye, guys.
Okay. So Stephanie, can you speak on the Briarwood Court resolution?
Yes. The board will recall that this property went to the zoning hearing board for an accessory apartment, AKA an in-law suite. They received approval. As part of that, they had to evaluate their onsite septic system. It was not sufficient. And so they had to do a planning, a full-blown planning module for DEP and the Bucks County Health Department in order to accommodate the additional sewage for the existing and the in-law suite on the property. So this is the resolution that would go with the package that will go to DEP.
Okay, do I have the motion?
I'm moved.
Do you have a second? Second. Who gets it?
Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and do you want to go on to the resolutions, the record disposition?
Yes. Our right-to-know officer, Margaret, works with all the different departments to annually go through our files and provides you with a records disposition resolution that allows us to dispose of forms and documents that have met the requirement for how long we had to retain them. And we would recommend that the board approve this so we can move forward and make space for new files.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2570, records disposition for this year.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, zoning hearing board, do you want to take that over to Stephanie?
Certainly. I would recommend this matter be left to the zoning hearing board. This is for one of the tenants called Honeygro. They're going into the Barn Plaza Shopping Center. They're looking for some variances on our sign ordinances. So I believe this matter can be left to the zoning hearing board. They've dealt with these things in the past.
Okay. All right, we have the approval of the Chargers' report.
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list.
Move for the approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment? Any items? Hearing none?
I move for adjournment.
Okay, do you have a second? All right, we are adjourned.
Not too bad.